Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Westinghouse High School. I am David Vitale, President of the Board of Education, and on behalf of my fellow members, I welcome you today to this month's Chicago Board of Education meeting. Today is November 19th, 2014, and we are holding this month's meeting here at Westinghouse College Prep, 3223 West Franklin. I want to thank Principal Patrick McGill and the entire Westinghouse community for hosting us here this evening. It really is a pleasure to be here. I know that the Westinghouse community and the principal is proud to welcome us and show off their school. I also know that we can be a little disruptive when we move in like this, so I want to thank them for putting up with us this evening as we make an effort to reach out to the community in a different way by having our meeting out here this weekend, this evening. Today, we have the privilege of the Westinghouse ROTC color guard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, as well as the singing of the National Anthem by Westinghouse student Jory Biaqo. Would you please rise? We'll present you.
Ready, cut, right, face. Three, stand. Ready, cut. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rockets red glarered, the bombs bursting in air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I want to thank the members of the ROTC Corps and Ms. Biaqo for starting our meeting off in such an appropriate way. Let's give them a hand for getting this going. The regular meeting of Wednesday, November 19th, 2014, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Benin.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Board member Zott.
Here.
Dr. Ascoitia.
Present.
President Vitale.
Here.
I have five members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize our honorary student board member, Angel Diaz, and our shadow student, Justice Henderson. Thank you. I also like to acknowledge our CEO, Barbara Bird Bennett, as well as James Beverly, our general counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're going to start with our honorary student board member, Angel Diaz, who is going to introduce this month's shadow student. Angel?
Thank you, President Vitale. Today, we are joined by our first shadow student, Justice Henderson, a senior at Air Force Academy High School. I have asked Justice to share a few things that are important about her school experience. She has prepared remarks for us today. Justice?
Thank you, President Vitale and board members. As Angel said, my name is Justice Henderson, and I am a senior at Air Force Academy High School. I also graduated from a CPS elementary school, Leslie Lewis. Thank you for the opportunity to be one of the 2014 to 2015 shadow students. Angel had asked me to share a few things that are important about my school experience. It is important for me to have as much assistance as possible in order for me to apply to college and scholarship opportunities. My school is preparing me to be college-bound in just about every aspect of my experience. For example, I am learning time management skills, and my school recently added a class that specifically helps students who are having trouble, whether it is academically and/or socially, and gives second chances at improving grades and personal character. As a student, I also value the support of my teachers, staff, and administration. I have very passionate teachers, staff, and administration at the Air Force Academy High School. Thank you again for this opportunity to share my experience. I am happy to serve Chicago Public Schools as a shadow student and offer some of my experiences as a CPS student.
Thank you, Justice. Mr. President, this concludes the shadow student introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Angel and Justice. We're really pleased to have you join us today, and good luck in your pursuit of college. We know you'll be successful. We will now proceed with our Honoring Excellence Program. Barbara, may I turn this over to you?
Thank you, President Vitale. We are going to slightly differ from today for Honoring Excellence. I'd like to take a moment before to share information about the school that we are at right now. George Westinghouse College Prep is propelling its students to academic success that's far beyond our imagination and our hopes. The graduation rate last year was 84.9 percent. College enrollment is exceeding 78 percent, and the composite ACT score is above 20 percent, 20 points. And nearly nine out of every 10 freshmen at Westinghouse are on track to graduate. All of these metrics exceed the district averages and are indicative of a school that is delivering on its promises to make certain that all of its students have a quality education. Westinghouse became one of our most exceptional schools as the direct result of the leadership of Principal Dr. Janice Jackson, who now leads one of our networks. I have confidence that Principal Patrick McGill, whose contract is being presented to the board as a part of this board's meeting agenda later this evening, is poised to continue the work that Westinghouse has been doing and the progress they have made. One of the most interesting aspects of the building here is that we were able to hold our board meeting and in this community space. We're privileged this evening to be joined by more than a dozen student performers from Westinghouse, who will generously share their gifts through words and music. It is now my pleasure to introduce the principal, Mr. McGill, who can tell us more about the talents of our students.
Welcome. Wow. On behalf of all of the faculty, staff, parents, and students of Westinghouse, welcome to George Westinghouse College Prep. I would like to start by thanking CEO Barbara Bird Bennett, President Vitale, and the entire Board of Education today for just giving us this wonderful and unique opportunity. I'm here before you to present our student performers, but before I do that, I'd just like to take a moment to recognize a few special guests that are with us tonight, and also tell you a little bit about why I believe Westinghouse is special. So first, I'd just like to thank Chief Washington and her Network Five staff. They've just been phenomenal in supporting all the initiatives that we have here at Westinghouse. I'd also like to thank Dr. Janice Jackson, who's with us today. She's the founding principal of Westinghouse. She was also my mentor through the UIC Urban Education Leadership Program. Finally, I'd like to recognize and thank our local school LSC chairperson, Mrs. Ford, for her support, dedication, and commitment to the school, as well as the entire Westinghouse LSC. When Westinghouse College Prep started six years ago as the first selective enrollment school on the west side of Chicago, and the first selective enrollment school to have a CTE program, there was a lot of excitement and talk of hope, but the question remained, how would it all pan out? I'm happy to say, six years and two graduating classes later, we have some data that CEO Barbara Bird Bennett just mentioned, and that data really shows and paints a picture of success. Today, we have a large, diverse student body, where we are taking in students from all over the city, of which 80 percent are considered low-income. We have an ACT score above 20. Our students choose from 19 different advanced placement courses, and our last year's graduating seniors earned over $11.4 million in scholarships. Beyond, though, the college preparatory education that we provide here, our faculty and staff are passionate about bringing the supports and giving students the strategies that they need to be successful in this rigorous coursework. As a result, Westinghouse champions student growth, and we have one of the highest freshman-on-track rates in the district at 96.4 percent. But beyond the statistics, and perhaps more importantly, when you talk to students at Westinghouse, they'll tell you that this is a school where you learn who you are as an individual. Our four CTE programs, our Youth Community Day, and our 45 clubs and sports allow students to really discover their passion. And our foreign language program, coupled with our international travel, gives students the opportunity to learn about the cultures and communities around the world and develop an appreciation for those. As a result, students graduate Westinghouse not only with an appreciation for their own identity, but for an appreciation of the identity of those in the world around them. And none of this happened by accident, right? This is a direct result of the careful planning, the passion, and the dedication by all of our faculty, staff, and students, many of whom are with us today. And if you turn and you ask them, are they content with this level of success, they will inevitably probably just start telling you about all the new things that we're starting to do. Teachers could mention how we're starting to create a full engineering course sequence for our students, or they might tell you how we just received a $61,000 grant for instruments for our students, some of which you'll hear perform today, or how we're applying to be recognized as a democracy school for the student voice that we champion here. Students will probably tell you about the two new clubs that they recently proposed, and I gave them approval of. The one, Bridging Gaps, where we'll have our students go to local elementary schools and read to third-grade students. The other called Humans of Westinghouse, where our students will actually take pictures and write profiles of people within the Westinghouse community and share those. And they'll tell you those things because at Westinghouse, we have a passion for continuously improving every single program offering that we have for our students, and that passion goes in with the students as well. All the initiatives I just mentioned are completely teacher-led and they're student-led, and that's important. In short, what makes Westinghouse special is that we have world-class teachers who are training world-class students, and it is truly an honor to have the opportunity to serve as principal of this school. Now, we have some student performers with us tonight. Please join me in giving them a loud and warm welcome.
My name is Kendall Rolf. I'm a junior here at Westinghouse College Prep, and today, I'm going to speak to you all about entering the void. We now live in a world where information can be transmitted across thousands of miles in mere seconds. There are revolutionary scientific discoveries each day. There are new advancements in mankind scientifically, socially, and technologically each waking moment. The importance of a quality education has never been more critical in history than at this very moment. To keep up with the exponential growth of information, students must be prepared, ready, and primed to become a part of this brave new world we call the 21st century. As a student about to jump into the void or the outside world, it's scary. I'm not sure what to expect, what to do, or what to become, but there's a spark of hope living within me, within all of us students, because we put our trust in our education in schools like Westinghouse College Prep, where the teachers and administrators put all their heart, soul, and energy into making sure we're ready for that void, so that when we look into the darkness, we see the light of the future. Thank you. (applause)
Principal McGill and the young people here at Westinghouse, thank you so very, very much. We are all, we're just embracing silence as we listen to the children. Everyone here should be incredibly proud of the young people. Janice, thank you. Thank you very, very much.[1248.83][1248.83](applause) Again, President Vitale and members of the board, I'm excited to report that most of the team from 125 South Clark has settled into the new central headquarters located at 42 West Madison. This is a monumental shift for us and one that would not have been possible without the hard work of many, many dedicated people. This move was necessary because the space at 125 South Clark was severely underutilized and inefficient. We are now in a fully utilized space that will ultimately save the district $70 million over the next 15 years. Staff are reporting that they appreciate the bright, open spaces that more closely match the collaborative spirit within which we hope to work. Our new home provides a fresh start and a renewed sense of purpose on behalf of Chicago's next generation. I'd like to thank everyone who played a role in making this transition move as quickly and as smoothly as possible, particularly Tom Tyrell, who did an incredible job leading this effort. Tom, where's Tom? Thank you so very much, Tom, for your leadership and for the efforts of your team in making this transition possible for all of us. Thank you very much.[1330.11][1330.11](applause) The holiday season is on the horizon, and there is still much work to do this school year, but at the district, we are also hard at preparing for school year 1516. The proposed school calendar for 2015-16 that the board will vote on this evening is consistent with the changes incorporated last school year based upon input from principals, teachers, parents, and many members of the community. The proposed calendar maintains the full school day and full school year so that students have the valuable time that they need in classrooms to maximize their learning. The first day of the new school year will once again arrive on the Tuesday after Labor Day, and instructional days for students will be evenly distributed throughout each quarter, thereby providing for continuity of instruction. By adopting a single, consistent school calendar year after year, we give families more time to coordinate their schedules, plan vacations and activities, and to help teachers and principals better prepare for the year ahead of them. I would now like to ask that Dr. Annette Gurley, the district's chief of teaching and learning, who will speak to you and walk you through the additional highlights that are proposed for the 2015-16 school calendar. Annette?
Thank you. Good evening. The proposed school calendar for the 2015-16 school year bears a very strong resemblance to our current school calendar. We maintain the 208-day schedule. 178 of those days are instructional days. We maintain the 10 paid vacation days for eligible employees, and we were also able to preserve the four Teacher Institute days, the three school improvement days, as well as three professional development days for, again, eligible employees, and then two parent-teacher conferences are included. So this remains unchanged from our current school calendar. Differences. The key difference in the calendar is that the calendar begins one week later for the 16 proposed calendar, and that's simply because Labor Day falls one week later. So we're keeping with the post-Labor Day start. So again, the big key difference is that we're going to start a little bit one week behind, but again, only because Labor Day is a week later. Additionally, spring break this year on the proposed calendar would be during the third full week of April. Considerations. As the CEO said, when we were considering this year's calendar, we were aiming for continuity so that parents... Again, President Vitale and members of the board, I'm excited to report that most of the team from 125 South Clark has settled into the new central headquarters located at 42 West Madison. This is a monumental shift for us and one that would not have been possible without the hard work of many, many dedicated people. This move was necessary because the space at 125 South Clark was severely underutilized and inefficient. We are now in a fully utilized space that will ultimately save the district $70 million over the next 15 years. Staff are reporting that they appreciate the bright, open spaces that more closely match the collaborative spirit within which we hope to work. Our new home provides a fresh start and a renewed sense of purpose on behalf of Chicago's next generation. I'd like to thank everyone who played a role in making this transition move as quickly and as smoothly as possible, particularly Tom Tyrell, who did an incredible job leading this effort. Tom, where's Tom? Thank you so very much, Tom, for your leadership and for the efforts of your team in making this transition possible for all of us. Thank you very much.[430.31][430.31][applause] The holiday season is on the horizon, and there is still much work to do this school year. But the district -- at the district, we are also hard at preparing for school year 15-16. The proposed school calendar for 2015-16 that the board will vote on this evening is consistent with the changes incorporated last school year based upon input from principals, teachers, parents, and many members of the community. The proposed calendar maintains the full school day and full school year so that students have the valuable time that they need in classrooms to maximize their learning. The first day of the new school year will once again arrive on the Tuesday after Labor Day, and instructional days for students will be evenly distributed throughout each quarter, thereby providing for continuity of instruction. By adopting a single, consistent school calendar year after year, we give families more time to coordinate their schedules, plan vacations and activities, and to help teachers and principals better prepare for the year ahead of them. I would now like to ask that Dr. Annette Gurley, the district's chief of teaching and learning, who will speak to you and walk you through the additional highlights that are proposed for the 2015-16 school calendar. Annette?
Thank you. Good evening. The proposed school calendar for the 2015-16 school year bears a very strong resemblance to our current school calendar. We maintain the 208-day schedule. 178 of those days are instructional days. We maintain the 10 paid vacation days for eligible employees. And we were also able to preserve the four Teacher Institute days, the three School Improvement Days, as well as three Professional Development Days for, again, eligible employees. And then two parent-teacher conferences are included. So this remains unchanged from our current school calendar. Differences. The key difference in the calendar is that the calendar begins one week later for the 15 school -- 16 proposed calendar. And that's simply because Labor Day falls on the -- falls one week later. So we're keeping with the post-Labor Day start. So again, the big, key difference is that we're going to start a little bit one week behind, but again, only because Labor Day is a week later. Additionally, spring break this year on the proposed calendar would be during the third full week of April. Considerations. As the CEO said, when we were considering this year's calendar, we were aiming for continuity so that parents and staff could plan. We are also looking to ensure that the first day of class for students is that first Tuesday following Labor Day. And we wanted to make sure that the quarters were equally distributed so that we have -- I think our shortest quarter is 43 days, our longest quarter is 46 days, and the average quarter is about 45 days. So we're looking to have that balance for the quarters. And then here, you simply see a screenshot of the calendar for school year 15-16. And we're proposing today to the board that this calendar be adopted.
Thank you very much, Annette. School Quality Rating Policy. As a result of the hard work, again, of our parents, teachers, principals, and the community, our students are raising the bar for academic performance at Chicago Public Schools. Our graduation rate is at an all-time high and poised to go even higher. We continue our efforts to improve over last year's attendance rate. Test scores are up, suspensions are down, expulsions are down. And in schools and neighborhoods across the district, there is a belief that we are headed in the right direction. While our students build on their successes, the district is working to level the playing field for schools across the city with a common measurement of accountability. Initial discussions on the school quality rating policy began in 2012, and the policy was approved by the board in August of 2013. This is not just another accountability system, but rather the perfecting of the system that was approved by the board in August of 2013. The policy was created in collaboration with the Chicago Teachers Union, the Chicago's Principals and Administrators Association, community groups, and the University of Chicago Consortium on Chicago School Research. This is the same spirit of collaboration and transparency that earned the district recognition in a recent report by the Center for American Progress that reviewed assessment systems across urban districts in the United States. The report stated that, and I quote, "Chicago Public Schools stood among all the districts for its transparency regarding districts' assessments. The same level of transparency is exactly what the school quality rating policy will provide once school ratings are released." As a result of this work and the work with our stakeholders, I believe that the school quality rating policy is the most thoughtful and thorough accountability system ever implemented at CPS and is being closely watched as a model around the nation. This evening, I am asking the board to consider two amendments to the school quality rating policy. These amendments are the results of the board's direction to fully engage our district around the implications of the school quality rating policy and reflect on the feedback that we receive from principals, teachers, community members, and other stakeholders. Many of those principals who provided input on today's proposed amendments are in the audience today, tonight. And some of their teachers, LSC chairs, assistant principals, and parents are also here. And I'd like to just take a moment to ask if they might stand so that I can thank them publicly for their tireless efforts of meeting with me after school during the school years.[800.31][800.31][applause] Thank you very much.[804.56][804.56][applause] Thank you so very much. In addition, although she is unable to be here, I would like to read a brief portion of a letter that I received this morning from Clarice Berry, who is the head of the Chicago Principals and Administrators Association regarding the proposed policy amendments that the board will consider this evening. Quote, "Thank you for providing me with an opportunity to preview the proposed changes to the school quality rating policy. The policy changes seem to be well thought out through an evidence of a wide range of stakeholder input. There must be a way to report school quality ratings in such a way that is differentiated, understandable, and accurate. I believe the new policy achieves these goals. I clearly see and support the reasoning the district employed to acknowledge the growth of schools at each level and also within individual levels. The first proposed amendment maintains the new five-category ranking system but simply reclassifies those categories as levels instead of tiers. These categories are Level 1+, Level 1, Level 2+, Level 2, and Level 3. This change reaffirms the importance of the differentiated five-category system but in a language that is already familiar to community: level rather than tiers. In addition, this proposed amendment maintains the support system that will be applied to schools based on the ratings that they receive. To Board Members Zopp and Hines, I thank you very much. You have been staunch advocates for ensuring that we have an accountability system that provides the greatest level of support to those schools in most need. And I am confident that the school quality rating policy we present to you this evening will provide the mechanism that will allow the district to intervene appropriately with those schools that need the most support. We're also asking the board to consider an amendment to the school quality rating policy that would allow for the CEO to consider significant impacts to a school before lowering its rating below Level 1. Such considerations would include, but not be limited to, an event such as a change in school leadership, a dramatic fluctuation in student enrollment, or change in an academic programming and focus. I believe that when our most successful schools experience that type of a significant change, they can contribute to the fluctuation in the rating, and that those schools and the school -- the teachers in those schools and the families and students deserve a full year to stabilize and continue their upward trajectory. This amendment, therefore, would remove the burden for schools to have demonstrated success in the past and need an additional year to return to stability. We believe that these changes to the school quality rating policy will help put our schools on a path to reach the highest academic standards that we have set as a district and to provide the proper framework to more fairly and accurately measure school performance. Most importantly, the school quality rating policy empowers families to make informed choices about the array of school options and educational experiences our district has to offer. I would like to introduce our Chief Accountability Officer, Dr. John Barca, for a deeper look at the proposed changes to the school quality rating policy. John?
Thank you, Dr. Bird Bennett. To President Vitale, members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity this afternoon to explore just a little bit more about these two proposed amendments on this evening's agenda. So you remember that when we had initially addressed the school quality rating policy and the UIS had approved that in August 2013, it was a move away from where we had been to a common accountability system for all schools, whereas the CEO reminds us always, "All means all." And this common accountability system is articulated on the right side of the slide here, and it's kind of the what was and what is. The prior performance policy had these metrics that had been centered on assessments, a lot more focus on testing. So what we're seeing now in the new school quality rating policy is much more holistic than in the prior policies, reflecting the broad-based support for moving away from heavy reliance on student test scores as a disproportionate indicator of school quality. The new policy also adopts the use of, as Dr. Bird Bennett said, five categories instead of three, whereas the five-category strategy allows for the recognition of excellence as well as provides a clearer picture of the intervention and supports needed for lower-performing schools. In what has become a model for other districts around the country, the SQRP also incorporates an options-school model and allows schools that serve students who were previously called "alternative schools," but these are schools that have special focus to help students who might otherwise drop out be headed in the right direction toward graduation, toward completion, and success in college career and life. Again, that's a portion of the school quality rating policy that you all approved that really is a model for the rest of the nation, and so many people are calling and writing about that now. The measures of academic progress for the NWEA became the test of choice as the state moved away and phased out the ISAT in school year 2013-14. That was a major addition to the new school quality rating policy. The new school quality rating policy ties student performance to national benchmarks rather than to CPS benchmarks. So when you hear me say in just a few minutes that average performance is a characteristic of the 2+ level, it's that it's performance relative to national standards rather than only to district standards. And finally, the new policy expects schools to achieve this higher levels of performance with all students. Again, back to the "all means all" theme. So we instituted a 95% participation rate that encourages all schools to focus on all children and not just some. You'll also remember that in engaging a broad range of stakeholders, we've listed several here, but this is kind of a sampling of what the viewpoints that had been added to and were guiding the direction, not only at the time of the development of SQRP, we brought that to you last summer, but then also have continued throughout the course of the year and especially even as we moved toward the conversations with stakeholders regarding these SQRP ratings that are forthcoming. It became clear that what we needed to do was make two important modifications to the policy, and those are the ones that are under consideration today. So the question, why amend the policy further? As Dr. Bird Bennett pointed out, the nomenclature change really comes to us from several stakeholders that heard the board's approved ratings regarding tiers and said that that didn't quite fit with what people already knew about school quality, performance, and the level system previously. People knew that schools were rated by levels, and as such, our proposal to you tonight is to retain that level language, but then be very specific about differentiation within that, to move to a five-category system and a five-category distinction. I'll say a little bit more about that in just a moment. We also heard from stakeholders that major changes like a replacement of principal in the middle of the school year, an influx of hundreds of new students, or a substantial change in academic programming or academic focus might be a causative factor for short-term fluctuations in school performance. For schools previously rated Level 1, indicating high performance in that most recent round of measurement, we are proposing that the CEO be allowed to review the evidence and make a determination on whether to keep that school that has experienced a change in Level 1 at a Level 1 rating for one more year. News of this amendment has been especially well-received by principals and network chiefs who fully understand that the unusual circumstances some of our schools have experienced in the last year might promote and might need some additional consideration. It is not a guarantee -- let me just be specific about this. It is not a guarantee nor a promise that any of the schools that fall into this category would have an additional year of Level 1 status. It simply gives the CEO the ability to provide an appropriate rating for schools based on facts. So as far as the ratings are concerned, as we unpacked this and as we had the conversation with stakeholders, what the recommendation we're bringing tonight is that we retain Levels 1, 2, and 3 as broad, general thoughts that the community is familiar with, but then this differentiation we talked about, the specificity. And it looks like this. Level 1 is at the highest performance, that there would be principal autonomy and sharing of best practices. One of the things we hear from you, one of the things we hear from the community and across the country as well is share best practices. Those are out there in our district, and we need to be very, very deliberate about doing that. Our early indications are that we have several of the schools in our district across the city, not concentrated in one place, not concentrated in another place, but across the city that will be at this Level 1+ category. Schools in Level 1, the category, will be high-performing schools. What we know is that these are outstanding schools with much to share as well. They've been providing a big lift for students and need only minimal support from their network to continue their good work and continue to grow. Level 2+ performance is about average, but remember what I said earlier about average being more along the lines of national average rather than district average. Again, SQRP pushes us to a place where we're comparing our schools in our district with a national average. A quick word of thanks as we transition to Levels 2 and 3 for just a little bit more explanation. I want to offer a special word, as Dr. Bird Bennett did, to board members Andy Zopp and Dr. Mahalia Hines. Both Mrs. Zopp and Dr. Hines have been champions of the district providing differentiated support to schools based on their specific needs. They've also reminded us that providing intensive support to hundreds and hundreds of schools isn't practical or realistic. What you see with the ratings proposed today is a strategy that we believe makes sense for recognizing excellence and differentiating support. So those schools in Levels 2 and 3, I want to take these two categories very intentionally for just as the SQRP provides that opportunity to recognize excellence, the new ratings will tell us where we need to be providing the focus for our attention and efforts as a district. Performance at Level 2 is below-average performance, and as you see on the slide, provisional support is the name of that category. In the state law that gives us the right, and you all the right and the responsibility to administer these ratings and then do something about that in the way of holding schools accountable, the language was remediation. And for that Level 3, that language was probation. It's a very pejorative kind of terminology, and what we've done is moved toward the provisional support and intensive support to say exactly what we're doing with schools and why. Performance at Level 2, then, means that network teams and district support will get coordinated to provide substantial help to these schools. And in addition, what the state law says around this, that the performance level at Level 2 gives the CEO the authority to draft a new school improvement plan, that then the CEO would have direct implementation of that plan, provide additional training for the LSC, mediate disputes or other obstacles for improvement. And what we've talked about as academic team would be other kinds of supports that we might provide, like perhaps OS4. We plan on coming up with those plans, devising them as the results are made available, as we look at these final results, and we'll be bringing forward to you and to the community the plans for these schools. Level 3, this is my final point about the schools who are in the lowest-performance area. These are schools that are in need of intensive support. And what Level 3 performance tells us is that we need to intensively support that school and quickly. District-managed schools rated as Level 3 will get school diagnostic review, and will have the full attention of the CEO and the academic team, and together we'll be making recommendations that can range from, as follows, the replacement of a principal or staff, recommendation of a turnaround, ordering new LSC elections, or intervention in another targeted way. Charter schools and contract schools that fall in Level 3 will be placed on the academic warning list and will be given one year to improve performance or be closed. In summary, we believe the amendments proposed today help clarify to our community, to the board, and to everyone the performance ratings of schools and what we intend to do as a district to support schools. It is important to step forward toward releasing the results shortly, and we ask for your support tonight for these two amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I would also highlight one other point and one that has been discussed at length with many members of the community and with this board, that the designation of probation or probationary schools is eliminated under the proposal that we're submitting to the board this evening. And finally, in my report this evening is relative to minimum wage. I'm pleased to announce that the district is exploring raising the minimum wage to $13 per hour. We're supportive of the mayor's vision and intend to put together a plan to ultimately follow all of the sister agencies. We agree with the mayor that this wage increase is the right thing to do. And Mr. President and members of the board, this concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Carlos?
I just have a couple of comments. Well, I foolishly report that we're using more growth variables, more than just test scores, as the overall picture. And you know, as a board member, when we were discussing the tiers, I said if you are now in Level 2 and suddenly you're in Tier 3, even though it means relatively the same the perception, it's going to be a little bit different. Because any system that has a system of labeling, we have to be extremely careful in its impact to the school community. So the good thing about this is it's the alignment to the Level 1, 2, and 3 that people understand, and then within a level, there's progress as 1+ and 2+. and then within a level, there's progress as 1+ and 2+, which differentiates, which is very good. But my question, you know, I believe in deserved autonomy and earned autonomy, and I see principal autonomy here, and I wanted to ask our CEO, what are those autonomies going to be at this point in time?
The autonomies are also differentiated depending upon the school and the request of the principals. So many of our principals, although the standard for the WHAT is the Common Core State Standards, how principals choose to, the materials they choose to use, how they choose to deploy their staff, the focus around or the theme around which they create their academic program is clearly up to the determination of that principal. Those are just a couple of them off the top.
Other questions about the calendar or SQRP? Okay, I do want to thank Barbara and the team for their outreach to everyone and for all of you out there who participated in the development of this. This is a major step forward for the district, and I want to thank our board members who have weighed in heavily on this in their briefings. One of the things I know that has been going on and frankly may have been somewhat of a cause for the delay in getting this out is that an assurance that when we say we're going to have these categories and we're going to have these supports, that in fact those supports will be there. We don't want to be going out and telling schools if you're in this particular category and you expect that kind of support, that in fact we're not organized, in fact, to provide that support. So I appreciate the fact that we've gotten that response, and as you've heard today, they're pretty clear about what kind of supports go with each level of school, and I think that's very, very important. So with that, can I complete your?
Yes, it does. That concludes it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of announcements. On December 8th, marking the 25th anniversary of local school councils, there'll be a celebration at Lane Tech College Prep. For those of you who are interested in attending, you can contact the Office of Local School Council Relations at 773-553-1400. And as usual, I want to remind everybody that the board does offer office hours, and if you'd like to arrange to meet with a board member, please call the board office at 773-553-1600. Madam Secretary, would you please share the details for the next board meeting?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next board meeting will be held on December 17th, 2014. I would like to note that this meeting will be held at the CPS Loop Office. Advance registration will open at 8:00 a.m. on Monday, December 8th, 2014, and will close on Friday, December 12th, at 5:00 p.m. or until all slots are filled, whichever is first. If anyone needs assistance or has questions about the process, please contact the Office of the Board at 773-553-1600. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with today's public participation session. We have a couple of public officials with us today, and so I'm going to offer them the deference of going first, and I'm going to start with Alderman Kapelman from the 46th Ward. I haven't seen him out there, but I think he's here. And I believe he has told us what he wants to talk about. So after Alderman Kapelman speaks, I know we have some registered people from his community that we're also going to allow to respond, to make their comments. Alderman?
Good evening, President Vatali, and also CEO, board president Barbara Bird Bennett, and members of the CPS Board of Education. I'm honored to be here tonight. I am very supportive of public education and the principals and teachers that make public education good. With that, in the 46th Ward, I have been very supportive of the principals and the LSCs, councils, and the decisions that they make for their school. I want to express my deep support for Principal Stephanie Moore and the LSC from Uplift Community High School, asking CPS to look into creating a neighborhood boundary for this school. I want to make sure that there is quality education in Uptown, so that the residents will increasingly see their neighborhood schools as a desirable place for their children's education. And just grant me a little bit of permission, I'd like to brag on them a little bit as well. I want to congratulate Uplift Football Team on making the state playoffs. We're very, very, very proud of them. I also want to talk a little bit about Stewart School. There's been many public meetings about the reuse of this school. I want to thank Metropolitan Planning Council for organizing those meetings and the hundreds of residents who also attended those meetings. The number-one goal that those residents wanted, and my number-one goal too, is to reuse this school as a CPS school. Therefore, I was delighted when Principal Kay, as I like to call her, and the LSC members from Decatur Classical School approached me about moving this school to the Stewart Building. I thought this would be the perfect opportunity to fulfill the community's desire to have this remain a public school, and it also supports Decatur's goal to expand the 7th and 8th grade, which would make it a much easier transition for them to go on to high school. As I said, I will continue to support the principals and teachers that work hard every day to provide the best education possible to our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman. We appreciate your coming and sharing your views with us and your opinions. They obviously always carry a great weight. We're aware of the situation at Decatur, and there's nobody more than us that wants to give that school the opportunity to have a full 7th and 8th grade to go with it, and I assure you that we will look at every opportunity to try to help them achieve that end. You know, we're always working on money, which is always a problem with anything we try to do around here, but thank you for coming down and speaking on not only their behalf, but on behalf of the schools in your ward. Because the Alderman is here, we know we have a number of speakers today from his ward, and I want to give them the opportunity to speak while the Alderman is still with us. So Estella?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I will call the speakers. Speaker number 42, please, Cortez Duquet, followed by speaker number 50, John Ross. We then have speaker number 51, Kristin Kenevich, speaker 57, Jeanette Shar, and speaker 60, Kristen Boke-Graven. Speaker number 42, please, Cortez Duquet.
Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, everyone. I would also like to congratulate Uplift and show my support for making Uplift a community school. Let me make a clear point. The MP, the Metropolitan Planning Council, meetings were held June of 2014. The Alderman held a meeting with Decatur Classical February of 2014. So we know that the Alderman knew about the Decatur Classical intentions on expanding to Stewart before the council meetings, but that was not revealed in the Metropolitan Council meetings workshops with the constituents. So we did not know that a magnet school would move into Stewart without a neighborhood component. The wounds are still fresh from that school being closed. Approximately 18 months ago, a newly remodeled Stewart School was closed. Stewart Children welcoming school was Joseph Brenneman. There was an issue in the past year at Brenneman in which we helped those parents address. We are here today to speak about what we did not know for several years, that Decatur Classical School, an almost identical school to Joseph Brenneman, have been looking to expand into 7th and 8th grade. Now Stewart was a K through 8th grade. Now let's keep in mind, Decatur and Brenneman are both one-level schools. Our question to CPS, why were our children in the 46th Ward ushered into the same situation that Decatur Classical has been searching to expand from? It is also understood that the 46th Ward TIF money will be used.
Mr. Duquet, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Okay. So we would like for the board to allow our community to speak on the neighborhood component, because we believe that our kids should be included in this, in the state-of-the-art facility that our Alderman has agreed to create, but he did not fight or speak up for the closing of Stewart School and his constituents, but he speaks for Decatur Classical.
Thank you, Mr. Duquet. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you. I'm John Ross. I'm a parent of a 2nd grader at Decatur, and Mr. Kapelman talks about open meetings, but a week ago, there was a closed meeting with Mr. Kapelman and representatives of our LSC and other officials, at which they moved toward what is being positioned to those parents at Decatur who do not agree with this prospective move, as almost a done deal that could be resolved by this board as early as the next board meeting. At the same time this closed meeting was going on, Ms. Bird Bennett told me that she wasn't convinced that this was the best option for Decatur at all, and I appreciate that. And so I'm here today to get some clarification, because those are two very, very distinct issues. And by the way, there have been a number of closed meetings at which those of us have not been informed, and which those of us have not been represented by our own supposedly-elected representative officials. And so what I'm here to find out is, one is, we support the folks in Uptown, because it is on their backs, through their sweat and labor, that the money that the Alderman wants to put into TIF to give to people from another community has been generated. And we think this is wrong. It has already divided our school community. We know that the wounds are fresh in Uptown. And what we're here to tell you is that an injustice anywhere is an injustice everywhere. And to that end, if an injustice is perpetrated that benefits me, I must be as outspoken against it as I would be if it is an injustice of which I am the victim. And this is an injustice that has been carried out by well-connected, well-heeled parents whose TIF money is going to go to expand a school, and we all want to expand our school, but not on the backs of this community, not on the backs of people who have earned the tax revenues that are being leveraged.
Mr. Ross?
I will conclude.
Thank you.
For our benefit. And for that end, they need basic human needs, basic human needs like water, police, school that we take for granted because of where we go to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Hi, I'm Dr. Kristin Velazquez-Kenevich. I come to you as a parent of a child at Decatur Classical. I'm also a licensed clinical psychologist, and I strongly urge the board to reject the proposal to move Decatur Classical to Stewart Elementary. And as the people before me have stated, this proposal depends on $15 million of TIF money from the Uptown community. This is grossly unfair. My child is named after Abraham Lincoln, who's somebody who fought for people who could not fight themselves and who fought for their rights. And to me, doing this is the equivalent of modern-day slavery. It is taking the labor and the resources from one community that needs those resources and giving it to a privileged community, a group of kids who have access to resources. As a Decatur parent, when I signed up, I knew my school only went to 6th grade. That was okay for me, okay? Nobody was under an illusion that this was going to change. And yes, we want 7th and 8th grade, and I think most of it would love, most of us would love it on our own campus, but if, you know, if getting a 7th and 8th grade means depriving kids in Uptown of these resources, I am against it, and my child will not go, okay?
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Jeanette Shar, speaker 57, followed by speaker number 60, Kristen Boke. I would also like to call Mr. President, the individuals that are here from the Uplift community, and that would be speaker number 40, Mark Kaplan, as well as speaker number 58, Elizabeth Leroy.
Good afternoon. My name's Kristen Boke-Graven, and I'm the chairperson of the Decatur Classical Expansion Committee and the vice chair of the LSC. I'm here with Decatur's principal, the LSC chairperson, other members of the LSC and the Decatur community, to urge you to fix Decatur's biggest challenge, the need for a 7th and 8th grade. There are four main reasons why expanding Decatur to include a 7th and 8th grade is critical. First of all, K through 8 is the standard throughout CPS, and it's the preferred model in CPS's own tenure plan. Second, because Decatur ends in 6th grade, our students have four years of intense pressure to perform on high-stakes tests, starting at age 10, when they're in 5th grade, to get into 7th grade, only to repeat the process again to get into high school. This is pressure no other CPS student faces. Third, Decatur has outgrown its current building, which was originally designed for kindergarten through grade 2. This is a building without a cafeteria, a gym, an auditorium, and most importantly, without room for a 7th and 8th grade. And the final reason expanding Decatur is critical is because CPS holds a solution in its hands right now. The solution is to move our program to the former Stewart Elementary School building, which is already slated to be repurposed. This is important because Decatur's problem isn't going away. In fact, in every single SIPA and CIWP survey our community has done in the last 10 years, parents have ranked expansion to include 7th and 8th grade as Decatur's top need. And expansion is one of the main goals listed in our last several CIWPs and SIPAs. As you can see in the timeline that we submitted to you, we've worked closely with CPS to analyze every possible option.
Ms. Shar, excuse me, can you please conclude?
I will.
Thank you.
Including expanding in our current location and looking at others. And from these discussions, we understand that moving is the best and only way CPS can meet our needs. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Shar. I am the LSC chair at Decatur Classical, and I'm here to happily report strong support among our parent body about this potentially transformative move for Decatur. Leading this conversation is our principal Susan Kukelka, who is unwavering in her desire for expansion. As you can see in the letter submitted to you, she informed parents that relocation to Stewart is the best and only option before us. Robust conversations within our community show not just a majority, but a supermajority of parents and our community members favor this move. A survey was recently conducted on November 12th, conducted because a group of parents objected to this particular relocation, and we asked specifically about relocation to Stewart. In that survey, with participation by over 85% of our community, 70% favored this relocation. 10% had no preference. We also asked parents to send the LSC letters explaining their positions and concerns. Those letters which you have now also validate those survey results, with 79% of our parents saying they favor expansion and relocation to the Stewart Building. We can have productive conversations now with you and CPS about safety and security, transportation and busing, curriculum and funding for capital improvements. When we appeared before you eight weeks ago, we came knowing our parents sought to preserve any and all solutions for expansion. We We came knowing our options were dwindling, and we came knowing Alderman Kapelman fully supports Decatur's relocation to Stewart and is committed to helping secure the funding necessary for the relocation. We came back today to ask you to make this move happen, because it's the right thing to do for Decatur. It is the right thing to do for current and future CPS students.
Ms. Shar.
And it is the right thing to do for the district as a whole.
Thank you.
Hold on ma'am.
Thank you.
Hold on ma'am. I'm going to ask that you, I'm going to ask that you be quiet and let the speaker speak. I'm going to, one more time, I'm going to ask you, everybody gets their two minutes if they signed up. You are not, you are not to interrupt a speaker. Ma'am, you make, you make.
I have concluded. Thank you.
Can I just, this was handed out by somebody and there's a confidentiality warning on it? You realize that's invalid, right?
That is for members of CPS and the board who are looking at the letters.
You just gave it to us, it's a public document, just so you're clear. Subject to FOIA, just so we're clear, that there are no laws that govern that we can't keep this confidential.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Speaker Number 40, please, Mark Kaplan, followed by Speaker 58, Elizabeth Leroy.
Okay, my name's Mark Kaplan. I'm the community rep at Uplift Community High School. I think I've earned that title. I've lived in this community for over four decades and struggled to stop the gentrification of the neighborhood and for high-quality schools. Before I go into Uplift, I'd just like to make a short comment. For people, it's kind of like the settlers back in the old West, you know, when they were saying, "We really need a place to expand." So, we don't care what the Native Americans think, we're going to expand right into their territory. And we've done a survey of all the settlers in South Africa, and they all said that 95% say, "Let's go and take all the land away from the Native African peoples." So that's really the analogy. But what I'm here to speak about is, Uplift is a very successful, low, open enrollment high school. It's successful because the people that designed the school, the people who work at the school, are people who came from this community. If you look at the statistics, you always say you're data-driven, look at the statistics, we have a way above-average graduation and college enrollment rate, and particularly for African-American males, we have a much higher-than-CPS-average college enrollment and retention rate. It's a high-quality school, I was part of the transition team, but something happened between what the board approved and what went into existence. The thing that happened that was, the initial design, in two years, the second year, this was supposed to be the community school for all of Uptown, supposed to be the school where children from, was Stockton at the time, now called Courtney, Stewart, which is now not in existence, Brenneman, and McCutcheon, all those students were supposed to go to Uplift.
Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
And then, I'll wrap it up. We have, we're urging the board to support the proposal to make Uplift the local community high school as part of sustainable schools transformation.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker 58, Elizabeth Leroy.
Good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you to Alderman Kapelman for his presence and support this evening. My name is Elizabeth Leroy. I'm working this year with Principal Moore at Uplift Community High School as part of my graduate program at the University of Chicago. I also work part-time at Emmanuel Anglican Church, which meets in Uplift's building. We rent from them on Sundays. I'm here today to speak as a representative of the Pre-K to Careers Education Initiative, which Principal Moore began in order to strengthen collaboration between Uptown schools and community organizations that want to enhance educational opportunities and outcomes for the youth of Uptown. The initiative has held two planning meetings so far, gathering together local pastors from Emmanuel Anglican, Jesus People USA, Uptown Baptist, Amish Yo Day, principals, LSC members, and other representatives of Brenneman, McCutcheon, Courtney, and Truman College, and community organizations such as Friends of the 46th Ward Schools, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Grassroots Curriculum. The initiative has also invited support from local CPD, and we appreciate the support of Alderman Kapelman as well. What these various stakeholders enthusiastically agree upon is this, opportunities abound for improving educational outcomes in Uptown, and collaboration through the Pre-K to Careers Initiative is vital for success. Currently, about 70% of children who are residents of the 46th Ward attend an elementary school or a neighborhood magnet school in their own community. As Uptown continues to move through a pivotal time of economic revitalization and redevelopment, it's critical for schools and organizations in Uptown to work together to serve youth in effective and innovative ways. We request the board, of the board, two things, to help collaboration on education via the Pre-K to Careers Initiative to succeed. The first is a boundary change for Uplift to make it the neighborhood school in Uptown, so the area students.
Ms. Kaplan, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, and we also request an appointed representative to help make this transition. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, excuse me, can I, I don't know why I'm mic-ing someone. Can I just ask you a few more questions? Because I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes.
The school now is an open enrollment, right?
Correct.
So, all the kids in the neighborhood who want to go there, or, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand the difference. So are you trying to exclude kids from outside of Uptown and limit it to the Uptown schools? Kids?
No.
Because right now, all the kids that go to those schools, if they want to go there, or do you not have enough space? I'm just trying to understand what it is you're, what the problem is now in terms of the boundary.
Okay, we don't have a problem, Stephanie Moore, the principal from Uplift, we don't have a problem. What we're trying to do is coordinate our efforts more smarter. So, we came up with this Education to Careers Initiative, where Uplift will work with the staff, not just the students being applying to the school, but kind of mirroring what the district is already doing in the networks, with the K through 12 networks. Just makes more sense for us to work with the teachers in the local elementary schools on what kids need to know and be able to do to be successful in high school. And Truman College has agreed to work with us on what kids need to know and be able to do their first two years of college, therefore giving the students in the Uptown community a pre-K to a career opportunity, all within walking distance of their communities.
So I guess, Mike, the question I'm asking is, why can't you do that now?
Well.
Because those students, wait, let me finish, so you understand?
Okay, sure.
Because those students could come there now. So those neighborhoods' kids could make Uptown their first choice if they wanted to, whether we change the boundaries or not. So why can't you do those things? And I'm not saying it makes a difference, I'm just trying to understand why the boundary decision makes a difference on your ability to do that, given that it's an open enrollment school.
Okay, so again, the boundaries will just put us together more closely, and the LSCs have started working together, because we are right there, and right now, they go to, they have to travel far, and there's no high school in the 46th Ward assigned. And like Mr. Kaplan said earlier, when we opened Uplift, we wrote the proposal, I happened to have the pleasure of being on the transition team that wrote the proposal for Uplift, we never asked for a citywide boundary. And now that Renaissance 2010 is gone, we would just like to return to our original vision.
All right. Thank you, that was very helpful, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. President, that concludes the speakers for Uplift.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of your input on the situation up there. Alderman Fioretti is with us, I believe, and I appreciate his patience while we worked our way through the 46th Ward.
Thank you. And first of all, I do want to thank the members of this George Westinghouse College Prep, principal for the work, your students. I've been here many a time, I've enjoyed everything that has always happened here, and it is a great school to see the improvements and the work that you've done. But I also want to applaud the local school council folks, because of course, it's their hard work that helps make things happen across the board. And to the board, I want to thank you, and to the members of, to Barbara Bird Bennett, thank you very much. You know, last week, eight of us introduced a resolution calling for hearings into the current or past borrowing practices of the Chicago Public Schools. An investigation by the Chicago Tribune showed that risky bond deals CPS entered have cost taxpayers, our school system, and our students millions of dollars. We closed near over 50 schools supposedly to help save the budget, but meanwhile, we lost more than $100 million gambling on Wall Street. That's $100 million that could have been used to save some of these schools, pay our teachers, provide resources to our struggling schools, and more. Our teachers shouldn't have to hold bake sales for basic supplies for our students. And, as NBC reported, the records show that the public was not consulted on these risky and toxic swap deals before they were entered into. Furthermore, the board approved other contracts that didn't specify costs. Why are decisions that are ending up costing our schools millions of dollars being made first without consulting the people affected most? When asked about these deals, we've heard from the mayor, there's a thing called a contract. Yes, that's true, but he obviously seems to only respect those contracts when it comes to his wealthy benefactors. Yes? Yes, there is a thing called contract, but banks broke that contract, and the mayor broke the public trust when they pushed CPS into this deal without knowing that we, the taxpayers, would likely lose millions. I think the mayor and this board has an opportunity to restore public trust by getting out of these toxic swaps and finding ways to move forward in a more fiscally responsible manner. And I know to the general counsel, sometimes he may be scratching his head, but we can find ways. Clearly, we could file an arbitration claim against the banks for violating the fair dealing rule, which prohibits misrepresenting or omitting facts about risky investment deals. Secondly, we could sue the banks for violating their side of the bargain. Third, we can ask the banks to voluntarily, as many people have done for their own home mortgages, to renegotiate their contracts, which is a pretty common practice in business. And finally, this board can put political pressure on the banks. Let's not forget how they put pressure on us when they demanded to be bailed out. So why idly buy and let our city be sold out? Gambling with our children's future is not the same as investing in it. This is another long line of examples of administration prioritizing private interests over the public good. The people of Chicago shall not stand to have their children used as investment opportunities so bankers and billionaires can profit. Do something now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first speaker then will be Speaker Number 1, Sarah Chambers, followed by Speaker 25, Zerlina Smith from Maria Salsedo Scholastic Academy. Sarah Chambers, last call.
Okay, I'm Sarah Chambers, Special Education Teacher at Salsedo Academy. At the beginning of the year, every kid is given a reach performance task. And Board of Education members, I want to ask you a question about this. What do you think is the reading level for the 5th grade reach performance task? Do you have any guess? It is at a 12th grade reading level. This is according to the Flesch-Kinkade Readability Index. This does not make sense. Why would a 5th grade test be at a 12th grade reading level? All right, what do you think about the 4th grade test? What reading level could that be at? The 4th grade test is at a 9th grade reading level. Why would you choose to make these tids, take these tests that are 5 to 7 grade levels above their reading levels? Why would you choose that? You are setting our children up to fail? You are setting them up to fail so you can label our schools as failing, close our public schools in Black and Brown communities, fire our experienced teachers, privatize our schools. And right now, you are about to vote on a motion later on in this meeting to, again, pass $649,000 for value-added measures on these tests, which are proven to fail our students. If you truly do not want our students to fail, you will remove these unfair assessments and tell Illinois, "We will not take these park assessments," because you know it'll be at multiple grade levels above our kids' heads, just how most other cities in this country have chosen not to take these tests.
Ms. Chambers.
If ISB denies your demand, I'm almost done.
Ms. Chambers.
I know some people who could teach you how to boycott these tests. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Hi, I'd just like to speak on the testing part. I'm a parent of a CPS student who's in kindergarten for the first year. My daughter is being tested right now. I just received her report card. Her teacher told me that she did not understand how to put letters and numbers together until she got to a certain point. I sat there with the teacher and showed the teacher that I do this at home with my child, so I know she knows this. My daughter, when it comes to testing, and I'm quite sure like any other child, does not understand what's going on on a time, quick, push basis. A 5-year-old should not be worried about, can they get a correct answer to pass to go to the next grade. When we sit back and we think about what we're doing to our kids, our kids are really, really suffering. My daughter, and I know I'm hard on my daughter because I want her to succeed, this is why she goes 16 miles away from home to a school to get a quality education, because the schools that are in my Black communities are Level 5 and fail, because we have no resources, because the only schools that get them are selective enrollment, AUSL, okay? When you sit here and make these frown faces, as I tell my daughter, you know, it's easier to smile than to look crazy at someone who's trying to speak, and we feel like we're standing here begging the same dead people. You guys are the worst predators that there are, sitting somewhere making decisions about our children, and you have no idea what's going on in our communities nor in our school. Okay? So when you turn your nose up, remember, remember, Zerlina Smith, I have a 5-year-old. When the mayor gets out, you leaving too, because he's not going to be there. Y'all leaving too. We gonna get an elected school board, and we gonna make sure, you too, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay? You gonna be the first, because I'm gonna make sure we there to help them get your stuff out.
Our next speakers, please. Our next speakers will be Speaker Number 38.
Estella? Michael Brunson is here.
Thank you. Mr. Brunson, please. CTU.
Thank you for recognizing me. Look, the aldermen stole some of my thunder here, but once again, last week, the Tribune published a few articles describing the interest rate swap agreements that the district paired with $1 billion worth of securities issued from 2003 to 2007. They calculated that CPS will overpay by $100 million over the life of this contract. This is a very conservative estimate, because our analysts calculate there's already been a loss of $200 million in interest payments so far, and it will extend to $400 million over the life of the contract. That translates to a job loss of over 4,000 educators. Add to that, that Chicago is also on the hook for more than $400 million in interest rate swap payments. But that's another story. Now, when this board first met in 2011, CTU members raised the issue of interest rate swaps back then. swaps back then, and you were presented with individual pledge forms to commit to renegotiate the swap deals and ask the bank to return the $120 million in profits made off the backs of our students, our educators, our schools, and our communities. It was submitted to you in June of 2011, and over the years, in the midst of paying all these unnecessary interest fees to bankers, CPS has laid off and reshuffled thousands of educators, shut down 50 neighborhood schools, opened more than 40 charters, slashed budgets, and only 50% of our schools have libraries, with librarians. And the list goes on, but as they say, let's move forward. Baldwin County, Alabama, Oakland, and Los Angeles, California, Detroit, Michigan, these are places that have arbitrated and successfully pressured the banks to end their toxic rate swap deals. You can do the same. Go get that money. We'll back you on this. Our students and parents will back you on this. The citizens of this city will back you on this. You have a chance to flip this thing and become heroes, become models for real change, and set an example for the city of Chicago to follow by renegotiating these swap deals. So I strongly encourage you to stop the bleeding. Renegotiate the interest rate swaps, end the payments, demand a refund, refund, and reinvest that money in our schools. Okay? So again, I have here some of the original forms, the original pledge forms from 2011 for each one of the board members to sign, and saying that they will go back and renegotiate these swap deals with the banks. I offer this to you. Thank you for your time. No response. I'll take my seat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, our next group of speakers are from Cook Elementary School.
Pardon me, Estella. You know, Michael, I, I think you're a finance guy. I just want to say that, I'm not asking you to respond, you don't have to go back to the mic, Michael. I, I get a chance to speak too, once in a while. I, I just want to say, your facts are not correct, and...
We've been trying for over a month to go in and look at your records.
Michael, I didn't ask you to respond, you had your time. Michael, please. Your, your facts are not correct. All right, Estella, move on.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, will be Speaker number 38, Stephanie King from Cook Elementary, followed by Speaker number 39, Artia Duberry. We will then continue with Speaker 45, Albert Gaines, Speaker 52, Erica Anderson, Speaker 53, Tracy Newton Travis. Stephanie King, please. Speaker 38. Ms. King.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephanie King, and I'm a parent of a Cook Elementary child.